So, welcome everyone to the February 21st meeting of the Town Hadley Select Board. We're going to have a meeting tomorrow shortly after seven o'clock. First order of business is the consent agenda. This evening we have a fairly short consent agenda. We have approval of the minutes from December 13th. Four warrants, two payroll and two accounts payable. We have a special municipal employee designation for the planning board. And we have a resignation from the Hadley Cultural Council by Beverly Rhodes.
So moved.
Second with discussion about taking off the special municipal employee designation, I'd like more information on that.
I concur with you Joyce, and matter of fact, I think it's probably a great idea. I just think that we should do this once and for all. So that if any other boards, independent people, you know, should comply with that, let's just do that once and again.
But I want to know what it's for.
Let's do it all. And so yeah, for more information and to make sure that we include everybody that should be as part of that.
Correct.
David, should we put that on a separate agenda item in future time?
It looks like it's a... There's a whole explanation on there.
I know, but it's not enough for me to just do it for the planning board. I want to know what their jobs and duties would be if they were special municipal employee designation. What does that entail for the planning board? Because it would be a conflict of interest with, say, they were going to do something Something to do with a building inspector or anything of that nature because that, all of that comes under their purview. So I would like a little bit more information before I say yes to that.
Bill Dwyer gave the example at the meeting last night that if he was having a conversation with either the assessor or collector for a client, it would be a conflict.
True.
That was his example of this.
But that would mean he would be a special municipal employee. He would still wouldn't be able to vote on it when it became before the planning board because he has to rescuse himself if it has indeed something to do with one of his clients.
All due respect, if we're asking for it to be brought before us and explained, let's just do it.
Yeah.
And then maybe, you know, we should take a look at any...
That's not actually a good enough explanation to me.
The conservation people.
Right, the other committees and stuff.
Absolutely.
Last time you looked at this was back in 2005, so that was the last comprehensive review of it, so probably up time for an update.
Okay, so I'll work with David to get in on the upcoming agenda.
You weren't even born then, were you?
Oh, you sweet doctor. Okay, so we have a motion made and seconded for everything other than that item. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. All right, we do have time for public comment this evening. Is there anyone here for public comment? Marlo, did you bring anybody that wants to make a public comment or no?
No, I think she's all set.
She's all set?
She's observing.
Okay, all right. You just have her observe. All right, no one else? Okay. Then why don't we roll right into the old business. First up, we have Steve Louis Subaru back before us. Hello.
Hello, thank you for having me back.
Do you want to come up here Joe, or are you gonna...
I'm sorry?
Do you want to come up here or...
Oh, sure. So we met with the planning board last night and as some of you may or may not be aware of, there was something that had came up that Jim had realized after the fact when he'd given me the information for what we needed to have prepared for the meeting. One more step for the... Excuse me, but for the engineer to confirm, which we have verbally confirmed today, but we have to go back and meet with the planning board again just to get the final stamp of approval on that. It seemed that everything was a go other than that last detail that we have been able to iron out. The snag that I run into is our hopes were last night to have the approval taken care of and then meet with you folks tonight so we can get the approval for the, to have the Class 1 license adjusted for the additional cars. You guys had given us an extension while we ironed out these details. The only down delay ongoing at this point is our extension expires at the end of February. The snag we're going to run into is our dealer plates have to be reregistered. The registration has to be in by the end of March. That process takes about 30 days or can take about 30 days. So if we now waiting to go back through the planning board for these last few steps, it's going to run us into a potentially a little bit of an issue with the state of Massachusetts getting our dealer plates reregistered. The registrations last for a year. If I send it in with a temporary license or a license that shows that it's only good for a few weeks or a week or month, they will deny our dealer plates because the dealer plates are valid for one year.
Planning board give you any idea when they'd be able to come back or...
Yep, so we can go back at the next meeting. We can go, I believe it's two weeks and I believe that's what it is.
Six?
Yeah, they said as long as we get everything in order, which we did, again, we were able to verify last night, or excuse me, this morning, that the last piece of information that they needed is in fact, we're going to be okay on that part of it. So we got to get a letter from Berkshire Design, bring it back to them in two weeks and then we should be good to go at that point.
And where's your parking going to go? I'm looking at the plans right now.
Yep, so as their request from the planning board, they asked if we move them a little bit further away from the road and turn them around to... Their concern was, you know, they didn't want to draw more attention to that area or they didn't want it, they don't want it to look like another retail spot for us. And I explained to them, by no means does it help us to have attention over there because we don't have a van, you know, we don't have staff there to accommodate, so it doesn't help us. So our goal is the same as theirs, which is to track the business to the 315 Russell Street. So the only possible concern we might have where the cars are currently parked is they might require us to put up shrubs to cover or at least to, you know, just to hide it a little bit from the road so it looks more like a storage lot than it does retail spot. So if they do in fact do the shrubs, I think we kind of all agree that it might make more sense to bring them back closer to the road so that we can put the shrubs on the other side of the guardrail, so it'll be, just so it's more pleasing, you know, to the eye.
Does a license for one facility cover the second facility or does it need a second license?
To me quite frankly, I'm a little unclear on it. The license, how the license reads is one continuous facility or one continuous lot. I was hoping that Tim Myheart would be back so I could check in with him a little bit longer, a little bit more, but he is out of town. The lot, as I, is... Do you want to rescue me here? Because as I interpreted, it needs to be separate.
Well, we're going to look into that. We'll get back in plenty of time.
And what kind of limit did the planning board for cars?
What we're looking for for approval is 70 cars. If that's what you mean by limit as far as the number of cars. Which we haven't, in that, in the timeframe that we've been utilizing that space, we've been operating between 30 at the lowest and probably 50, 60 at the most. The only time we exceed that number...
You know we can count, right?
What's that?
You know we can count.
Oh yeah, the only time we exceed that amount is if we, before snowstorms, we utilize that space to help out.
Maybe a day or two is around 30.
What's that?
Maybe a day or two.
That was the lowest. I did say that was the lowest. I'm not trying to kid you. That was the lowest, yes.
So you're looking for an extension then? So we're meeting on March 7th. Would you be the night after the planning board meeting?
I guess, I mean, what I would like to ask for and is, because our Class 1 license allows us to conduct business at 315 Russell Street. Right now, we have more cars than we're supposed to have based on that and that's why we're sitting here having this conversation today. So I'm hoping that we can extend our Class 1 license for the year and that the continued conversation that we have is for the additional units to be approved by you guys and where we place them approved by the planning board. So I'm hoping you guys can grant us the Class 1 license for the remainder of 2018 to operate as we already operate as far as 315 Russell Street, knowing that, you know, we're waiting for your approval for the additional lot. Because if for some strange reason this doesn't get approved, we have to go back to business as usual. We'll have to find, we'll have to, we'll have to talk to Subaru New England to find out what we can do with the vehicles, but to, you know, ultimately what will end up happening is we go back to business as usual, we hope. But, you know, obviously our goal is to get the additional lot approved so we can continue to grow and continue to work as we have been, so.
So would the board consider granting the Class 1 license conditional upon any order of conditions that the planning board may impose?
I don't think that's what he's asking. He's asking for his class one to be put forward. And he wants to have a second, not to exclude...
Not to tie it into...
Not to tie it into the second lot that's available over there so that he can continue and get his business done is what he's asking for. I hear what you're saying too, but I think it's a reasonable request that he's making. We've had no problems with Subaru, so I'm going to make a motion that we grant extending the license at 3, 3 what?
315.
315 Russell Street. And we hold back on anything that has to do with the approval or the...
Storage lot or whatever.
I'll second that.
So a motion made and seconded, just a question for the board. If they can't negotiate or, you know, come to terms with the planning board, then by granting it for the full year, we've really lost any leverage that we have right now. So I just want to make sure.
I hope, I hope I've proven that I'm willing to play by the rules and play nicely.
I think after all this nonsense, we made it clear that we're going to straighten this out.
We are all on the same page on that and I have every intention of...
But the whole thing is, we can grant you the license and at any time we can pull it back.
Right, I'd be in violation if I don't get this approved. We're all on the same page.
To me, that's never an issue.
Yeah.
Glad to give you a license as long as you're doing what you're supposed to do. If you're not doing it, we take the license back.
Exactly, yep. But granting us the license for the 2018 allows us the timeline that we need and the deadline that we need to meet for our dealer license or dealer plates.
All right.
Do you have an opinion? Did you want to voice an opinion? Now I'm chair.
That was the only thing I was contemplating was I don't, I don't want to lose leverage and you're right, I mean, we can, let the select board, give us, the select board can take it away. And again, presuming, good faith, I don't want to come across...
Yeah, just don't call me a Monday. Let me go through the steps.
Okay. So, any, anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you guys very much.
All right, good luck.
Thank you.
We'll be watching you again next time.
Yes.
I am going to jump to Marlo. I'm assuming you're here for the cemeteries?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. You're not hanging out with us for the evening, subjecting your daughter to this, or you're doing...
I believe I don't care.
Okay, so let's jump into the cemeteries.
All right, so we came to you at the beginning of the season with our concerns that we had lost too many members on the cemetery committee and that we were in some danger of not being able to perform that function for the town. And Marlo was good enough to pick up some of the pieces. In the meantime, Mr. Alan Weinberg has offered his services on the committee. So I think that's the first thing to do is to take that letter of interest and see whether he should be appointed to the cemetery commission. And I think he wants to be in the Old Hadley Cemetery.
Yes, that's one of the two vacancies.
Strongly recommend. Alan's a great guy. He brings a tremendous amount to any of the board that he's been on.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, so we still, we still need to run the cemeteries and we have three things that we need to do. We need to sell lots and open up graves and perform burials. We need to care for the cemeteries and mowing and appropriate care, still plowing where necessary. We also have a lot of genealogical work that gets done, records, sorting out records.
Do we have any burials in any of them during the winter?
No. So, last week, we kind of took this off the agenda because I was in the process of, I was going to meet with Mr. Weinberg. So him and I met last Monday, I think the 12th, somewhere thereabouts. We met for a good period of time and I explained to him the situation with the cemeteries and our needs and some of the history, the great work that, that none of our staff has done, the existing committee members and so on and so forth. But now that we have this gap, I explained everything to him and he showed great enthusiasm to take it, to take on some of the administrative things we're kind of missing right now, that those were the powers that were given to the cemetery committee way back in 1928, Article 30. And it basically states all the sales of the plots and everything to do with the cemeteries is under the empowerment of the cemetery committee. So what I was going to suggest as we make this transition and Al comes into cemetery committee, I was going to try and rally everyone and get them together and kind of come up with a plan how we're going to handle the cemeteries going forward. In my mind, I think it would be a great natural relationship with the cemetery committee coupled up with the DPW. Because both the committee and the DPW have doings in the cemeteries for many, many years. It would help provide a, I could help provide a buffer from, to the cemetery commissioners, you folks, from the cemetery committee also. So what I, what I want to ask is that I can be that person at buffer in between to kind of rally, rally everybody together and get this thing organized or keep the organization going. I've reviewed a bunch of records, actually some stuff made it onto a thumb drive, which is great, all the documentation. So with Alan coming aboard and volunteering to help some of that stuff together coupled with the DPW, I think we can come up with a stable plan going forward for the cemeteries and we could meet at another date when we come up with a final plan of everything going forward. And I believe the only way the empowerment to the committee can be changed is it's got to go to town meeting, if I remember correctly. But what I'm asking of the board is, you know, raising my hand, volunteering and say, can I jump in here and we can get this thing reorganized or get it going? Because the phones are ringing off the hook, you know, from when you're going into one sunny day. So I'd like to try and, our department pick up that little gap we got going and see if we can get a quorum with the committee and get a chair and proceed that way.
Any questions for Marlo?
So that was the only missing member?
We still have one vacancy.
There's four and one.
There's, there's two cemeteries, Russellville and Old Hadley that both had plots left for sale. So the other vacancy right now is Russellville.
There is one person that's kind of expressed interest there.
Yes.
For Russellville?
Yeah, Ms. Stengel.
For the cemetery committees?
General, not just...
Anne Shatree would have that, so we have there.
Diane Stengel.
Yeah. So.
Good.
Perfect sense.
Okay, motion?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great. Thanks Marlo.
Okay.
And actually, I realize I was remiss. Previously, Beverly Rhodes resigned from cultural council. Will you be sending a letter on behalf of the select board thanking her for her service?
I absolutely will.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Apologize for not catching that earlier. Thank you. All right, have a good night. You're good to go.
Thank you.
You're released from active auditing or whatever it is you're doing here, so.
You get a quiz later.
Yeah, okay. Have a good night.
Good night.
Okay, so you want to go to the senior center and library projects update?
Sure.
Senior Center is, we're meeting with the library group next Monday. We're meeting with the OPMs and the architects to produce an overall view of the site plan, which is something the select, the planning board has requested. So we're moving forward with that.
Okay. And then, I guess, just a quick update since there's been some, you know, articles in the press and the likes, so, you know, we continue, we had a meeting today of the joint, that overlap committee, the joint library and...
I suggest a name. The Building Coalition Committee.
The Building Coalition Committee, that sounds lovely.
The BBC.
All right, so that's the group that met today.
It wasn't one B and two C's.
Yeah. It's like, I'm sorry.
So, just a couple of things.
BBC is the beer.
Just a couple of things that came up at that meeting. So right now, the Legion folks or the petitioners, I guess is maybe a better way to put it, have requested audience with the select board on March 7th. So we'll plan on, you know, we'll have this standing agenda item at that meeting. We did talk about the possibility of moving our select board meeting that night in anticipation that may be a robust crowd. So we're looking to see if maybe we'll have it at Hopkins Academy that night. Because again, we don't, you know, we've been here before when people have spilled into the hallways and it's been difficult. So we need to work that out with Hadley Media and the schools obviously in order to make that move, so.
On both the shoulders.
Well, we actually talked about that, but unfortunately on Wednesday, that would be ideal, though on Wednesdays they have a committed...
AA meeting.
Oh.
It runs till 7:30.
Every Wednesday, so it'd overlap. Okay. So, that was one thing that came up. And then the, Joyce maybe goes, oh, you may be for Pat. Jeez. But then the other thing that we were talking about as well is there've been a fair number of questions about the, I'll call it the displacement process. You know, so we've got Hadley Media, we've got the planning board, and Park and Rec, you know, who right now are enjoying some space in the senior center. So people are already, again, jumping ahead saying, all right, well, once construction starts, what's going to happen? When are we going to have to move out? Where are we going to go? So today at that coalition meeting, we did talk about the fact that that's really the purview of the select board. And I know that the municipal building committee had also been having some conversations about that, but maybe sooner rather than later, we should be digging into that. So honestly, I have been of the mindset that the Goodman Memorial, you know, ultimately is going to become a vacant town building. And the planning board has raised a question about the parking there, whether or not there will be an issue, you know, with the building construction, et cetera. So I think that that's something we need to find out sooner rather than later, obviously, what's the answer there. But the other thing is Hadley Media has been looking at the possibility of, they approached the library to see if they might be able to find some space within the library, the new senior community center and also the schools. So they've kind of been taking up that charge on their own and figuring out, okay, this is what their, their needs are. One of the issues that the library folks broached today is that if in fact, they were to try and accommodate Hadley Media, the only way for them to do that is to really create some sort of a bump out on the current design, which in and of itself isn't a huge deal, but it becomes a bigger deal because as we all know, right now, the biggest challenge we have is making sure we have adequate parking. And if we modify the library building and create a morph of a footprint, we're now creating the necessity for more parking spaces. So, you know, I'm going to go to their meeting on Friday to talk that through with them, but maybe a couple of the other options are more, going to be more prevalent. Then the other thing is the planning board. I think the planning board perhaps has maybe been the most vocal about this and David was just mentioning at the meeting today that, you know, perhaps the planning board should be coming back, back into this building once, once they move out of there, is again, a stopgap until we have a longer range plan. It seems to make sense. They used to be here, right? They used to have space here?
They used to be right there.
Yep.
They have basement storage for all of their plans.
Oh, their stuff, so big issue of storage. And they're scanning, you know, doing everything they can to get it digitized for them.
The, I mean, the planning board is fairly easy compared to five.
Right.
Can't just have them bouncing from building to building, from floor to floor, it'd be nice.
Right.
And these, these are all things that were asked six months ago, eight months ago, way back, what are we going to do with them? And now it's here.
Exactly, yeah. And, you know, and I think in fairness to these committees, it's really not the responsibility of the building committees themselves to determine where these folks go. I mean, the buck has to come back to this table. So, you know, want to take some heat off of them because they're the ones who are getting all of the questions right now. Badgering perhaps might be the word to use.
But it is, I mean, we have kept it on our plate for more than six months actually since all of this process began, where we're going to put people from the time we moved Park and Rec out of North Hadley and temporarily putting them into Hookah School. You know, we've known that we're going to have to do something eventually and we just have, you know, our anticipation was using the library when the other building goes down. But again, that's a, you know, two-year process, so you've got to have someplace for them to go temporarily.
Well, Park and Rec's a little bit easier because rather than talking about, you know, following their desk, I mean, they're really not utilizing the senior center right now very much at all anyway. So they've been able to make it work. So I think the bigger issues, you definitely have the media and the planning work. But the planning board, again, if we can, just, people, we don't decide tonight, but people could be thinking about that just so that we can comfortably start telling them, look at, you know, don't worry about it.
Is there any empty school space at the elementary since the enrollment has not really gone up and gone down? Is there any empty space that they could utilize over the two-year timeframe that we could put maybe Hadley Media at the high school? Enrollment is down over there. I don't know what their space is right now, but it'd certainly be some for us to look into.
Definitely. And the issue that the school had right away was with access because they, it would have to be a self-contained space because when you open a school, their policy is you have to have a janitor, you know, and so it gets a little bit more complicated, but yeah, I mean, that could work. What we also talked about today is the possibility of the senior community center, again, on a temporary basis, utilizing one of their rooms. And we didn't get too far in that conversation, but it's just, you know, again, we all need to figure out a way to cooperate and make this work. So, so more to come on that, but just wanted to approach the topic here tonight.
There's one other group we didn't talk about, that's the historical group that keeps their things at Hookah School.
True.
The Historical Commission?
Correct.
That's right, yep. Okay. Yep, but we'll put them back on the radar too, Jennifer.
They're storing stuff over there, but they're meeting in town hall already.
Right, yeah, I knew that they were meeting here.
Yeah, they are meeting here. They have, they have an office, but they are meeting here right now.
But they have...
We do have a basement.
I've been down there. It's lovely.
Perhaps might be a little full.
All the historical stuff that they're storing in Russell School was upstairs in the library anyway, so why can't they put it back?
That wasn't them, that was the Historical Society too.
It was the library.
At Russell School?
The library.
I mean, the library.
The library, that was the Historical Society.
And what's the school too?
And we had Russell School for storage.
For storage.
Yeah, we can't have people in there, but we can have things.
But can you have things there where people wanting to come and go from them? I mean, that's having people in that book.
I don't know how much they access the stuff that you're talking about.
Yeah, I think from like an archiving standpoint, if they needed to get in and they had to call, you know, Marlo to have Gary Bird provide them with access or something, that could work. So. And in terms of the library, so the library was present as well, so we all know that they've hired their OPM. So they're now moving forward and again, both building committees are working cooperatively. The library did reach out today and sent David and I an email, they wanted to finalize their building committee appointments next, next...
Well, I would like to see, which we haven't seen, a set of plans. Some drawings or something that, you know, you people that have the time off during the daytime and get to go to these meetings gets to view the changes and things that have taken place, where John and I work during the daytime, don't have the availability to get to those meetings. And I would like to see something about, because of the changes that have taken place, we weren't privy to that. It was a surprise to me that where the building had to move and because of parking and all that, I didn't see any of those plans. And I know that it's, you know, you have your meetings during the daytime and that's okay, but I would like to see something.
Are they available on?
Originally, when you explained it to us, it was the core drilling and you just moved it over a little bit. I was under the understanding that.
Right. The plans basically-
A little bit and a lot of bit are two different things.
They have not really moved the building a lot from the very beginning. And we did show that at the town forum in May last year with the architects there and everything shown. We also had it, again, outside town meeting last fall. And there's been a few slight modifications, but we're going to have another forum on March 15th at Hopkins to show everybody further advancements with the building, like what it looks like with furniture in it and some of the finishes and all of this.
I just want to see the positioning of the building now that it's been changed a little bit and what's going to take place with, you know, in question is the parking lot at the Legion. So I wanted to get, I wanted to get a picture and a view of it.
All right. Well, basically-
We have seven plans across the hall, and I'll leave it out for you so you can look at it while half hour.
Available online?
I don't think so. Basically, there's a 40-foot required buffer back, no, not buffer, it's not the wet ones, it's 35 feet. It's 40 feet from the border to the side of the school, and that's where we're sitting.
I just, I just like a visual.
Well, and that is the other thing-
Is that a side setback?
It's a back setback. Because we're coming off Middle Street.
If you want to put that on your desk so I can, me and her read it this weekend, that would be great.
Sure.
Thank you. And just for the record, I haven't been in, been to any of those meetings. It's just been what I've, what I've caught on YouTube and-
I know this is your busy time too with taxes and stuff too.
But I think one of the things that would be good for us to do at that meeting in March is we also talked about kind of recapping, you know, and we've done this before with other issues that have been in front of us, rather than just have, I mean, all of a sudden, a lot of people are going to be paying attention for, quite frankly, the first time because of this issue becoming very public. So we really need to go back to, to May of 2017 because there was a public hearing with folks from the Legion present, asking questions. And this was question asked, question answered that long ago. But then time goes on and then other people ask questions and then people forget, you know? So I think we want to bring people through the chronology too because this isn't quite as dramatic as perhaps it's playing out in the world court of public opinion in terms of, you know, big changes being made or anything being done in a, in a smoke-filled back room. I mean, it's all been quite above board. It's just that people, I think, started hearing things and noticing for the first time and unfortunately, we're well into the process at this point. So, so what you'd be looking at isn't, I mean, it was shown back in May 2017 before the special town meeting-
Probably brought here and put on your table.
Public forum. I mean, that's all, it's all the same drawing. So, so this isn't a big shift. And I think it's important for people to understand that too. All right. So anything, so everybody good about, maybe that makes sense to kind of move it, just in case we do get a brush?
I think it's a great idea.
Okay. So we'll plan on that. Is there anything else from the meeting we talked about that I'm forgetting?
No, I think I've got some homework on a couple of technical issues, but that covers major points.
Okay. You good, Jane?
I'm good.
Okay.
So where's it, well, let's just say, where's the senior center going with this demolition?
Will be in our new building.
All right, so that's going up first.
We go, the new building gets built, we occupy, they demolish, library built.
So it's at that point of demolition that the other, the other departments get disposed?
And all things considered, that happens when?
Summer of 19.
Summer of 2019.
Yes.
Okay, so we've got time.
Not much. I think it, make people will be much more relieved if there's a plan-
Definitely.
-before the last minute.
Right. But I mean, that's the thing, we're talking about it now, we're just articulating it, but we've got time to, to gel these ideas, make sure that they will work. Okay? All right, then, let's see, so 2019 budget? And Warren, David?
So I met with the Finance Committee last night.
Budget or warrant?
Warrant.
Warrant.
Do you have, I have a warrant. Okay.
So I met with the Finance Committee last night and they set up their schedule to meet with the divisions for the, in order to go through the warrant, go through the budget process. I've given departments, I've given you all electronically and in paper copy that's scheduled. But in general, they're meeting on March 5th, March 6th, March 19th, 29th, April 3rd. At that point, they will finish the budget itself. They'll meet again on April 9th in order to make their recommendations on the warrant articles.
When do we have a public forum scheduled, David, before?
We have a public forum scheduled for August, April 26th, Thursday before, one week before. We need to post on April 26th. That's our deadline.
We're going to be cutting it close with that schedule.
Yep.
They've set the schedule and they know, I'm assuming the, some of the larger budgets are earlier and the smaller, less controversial budgets are later so that they can be-
Right. So they're focusing on the budgets that they have some control over, the larger budgets of general government, public safety, education, public works. And then they're saving the human services, culture and recreation, and the state assessment debt benefits, OPEB, things that they don't have any control over to the very last. They did talk about override. They're still interested in an IT director, an HR director, and a finance director, but they don't have any specific plans for that. I told them that they absolutely have to work with the Select Board on that because you control whether you have an override or not. So my understanding is that you're allowing the Finance Committee to do the review of the budget if they run into areas where they need to consult with you or we need to untangle, something that they'll be coming in a meeting with the Select Board. That's the understanding.
Everybody good with that?
Yeah.
Yep. And so we're free to, anybody that wants to, you know, David gave us a schedule, they're open meetings, you can go if you're interested.
Did you shoot us those dates? I know you just read them off, but-
Yeah. I think it's printed in their box or something. Oh, no, you emailed them, sorry.
And I'll certainly be publishing formal agendas for the Finance Committee as soon as we firm up these commitments from the divisions.
And they're going to be meeting at the, please?
Nope, they'll be meeting in the Town Hall.
Town Hall, okay.
And the meeting starts at 6:00.
And do you want to give us an update on the four petitioned articles?
So the four petitioned articles, one was disqualified because they did not meet the minimum requirements for a petitioned article. They needed 10 registered voters' signatures, they only got five, so brought that to the Select Board and you decided that you were not going to entertain it. This was the article to lift the moratorium on recreational marijuana, which we have in place until November 30th, 2018, to give us time to figure out what the state is doing with respect to their regulations. The remaining three petitioned articles are the Voting Amendment, the changing the ways that the town of Hadley would conduct their voting to something that is sometimes called instant runoff balloting. It would be a special act of legislation which would affect all annual town elections for all offices in the town of Hadley. If this special act is adopted, then the town would have to put together a bylaw which itself would have to be adopted by town meeting that spells out the details of how we conduct this. So what do you do in the case of a draw? What do you do in the case of a write-in candidate? What do you do in the case where, you know, you just-
But we're going to go back to hand counting the votes?
Well, that's one of the things that we need to talk about, is that none of our machines-
Don't go backwards.
No. What's this going to cost tax payers?
I sent an email to Jess, I don't know if she got it or not, except maybe a school vacation, but just asking from the town clerk's standpoint what the impact might be. Have you talked to her?
I have talked to her. None of her ballot machines can handle this kind of calculation.
So they have special machines that-
We'd have to get a special machine.
And she, she really doesn't know what it's going to cost. Now, I went down and talked to her. She actually voiced her opinion to me and I don't know if she wants me to bring that forward right now or not, but I am going to be against this just because of the cost, I believe. It's, all the new counting machines and stuff like that are going to be a big loss.
I don't think we've had a problem, so I'm not sure why we want to change it myself.
Who petitioned this anyway?
So it's then who has every right to do it?
Yeah. It's a group over, it's actually a movement.
Yeah. Big movement.
A significant one, yeah, that they're, it's certainly statewide in Massachusetts and the, the name of the group is escaping me and I apologize, but-
It was in the paper.
It was in the paper, yeah. The paper referred to it. So it's not just happening in Hadley, it's happening in Amherst. Magic that. No, and in other places too. I mean, from a practical standpoint, it does come down to what is it going to cost us?
They're absolutely good issues that David had just brought up.
Yep.
Because I know a couple other towns and I have read them in the paper where someone didn't accept a position, they were voted, they were voted in for the position and the second highest voter got, got the position. But that's a whole different story. It has nothing really pertaining to this right here, right now. But that, that's another issue that I, I did speak with Jess about this and I did speak to her about this other issue. Because of the problem we have with five board members a lot of times, obviously not this time, we have plenty of people running again now. But, you know, if we ever run into this situation, you know, what are we going to do without spending money and having another election?
Well, before we get to the point of actually taking a-
Yeah.
-position on this, it would be helpful to have, I mean, I'd like the town clerk's-
Impound.
Impact statement.
Yeah.
Doesn't mean the personal opinion, but just the impact statement would be helpful.
For her office.
Yeah, for the office.
From the office, what it's going to cost us possibly.
I just don't know what we're talking about.
We would also be required to do a voter education drive, so there would have to be, you know, I don't know if there is a direct cost associated with that, but there would certainly be time and energy spent by Town Hall staff, educated people-
Yeah.
As to how this would work. There would certainly be a lot of time and effort put into writing the bylaw because you notice that mechanisms for instant ballot runoff, instant runoff balloting are not spelled out here in any great detail. So we'd have to come up with that. I'm sure there are models out there.
Jennifer?
Excuse me, the petitioner did ask to come in and speak to the Select Board and I had mentioned it to you, David, and she wanted to schedule something and I told her that y'all took the schedule.
Sure. Yeah, I mean, I've got, I would be happy to have them in. It's always better to hear it directly, right? Yeah, so we'll plan on scheduling them in probably in the, in March, or probably not the 7th. Maybe the 21st.
Yeah. I mean, both sides, if they want to come in and address the board, I have no problem with it. Just explain a little bit more to us what, what direction they're coming from.
Oh, yeah, yeah, absolutely.
There's another side?
I don't, I don't know there's another side. I think you mean Jessica or-
Yeah.
Jessica Costas, yeah. Okay.
Is there going to be any idea of what we're going to get back in state monies by the time this budget process ends? David?
So the House Ways and Means Committee has a public hearing scheduled for March 19th, which tells me that they're going to reduce their budget a week or two after that. So last week of March, the first week of April, we should see another chair issue. Superintendent of Schools did a lot of work and was talking to me that the, the high assessments for school choice and for charter, she can't tie those numbers back to any real data. So there is a strong supposition that the governor's office just made an estimate as to what our choice and charter sending tuition would be. So we're thinking that we can knock that number down a bit.
Okay. Any further conversation, just because you mentioned the schools, about the stabilization articles?
No, but I did go over with the Finance Committee for the first time last night and we talked about the mechanics. We talked about the benefits that might occur from that.
So anything else you're looking for from us this evening? Are you expecting us to take any votes at this point or?
No, I think, I think we're just beginning to dig into this. I'll work with you to come up with a schedule for making recommendations on the, on the articles. I know CPA is meeting right now, they're, during this timeframe. They've got two requests in, one for painting the Town Hall and the other one for work, preservation work on the church in North Hadley. So they'll be coming back with their recommendations on those. The only other thing I would say is that the Town Council and I had a conversation late last Friday on the last two petitioned articles of having to do with the senior center. We both agree that these are majority votes for those two petitioned articles. There's further legal research that we're doing that may change some of the effectiveness of these votes.
Yeah, I think we would check into that and get that in writing.
Okay. All right. And then the other one, I was thinking too, the appointed treasurer and collector, that article, probably be good to have Sue and Linda come in too. We're going to talk about that so that they're present for that, so we can schedule that later in March too.
I had private conversations with both of them so that they understand the intent of this. Linda has reviewed it and she's come up with a technical correction, which I think is entirely reasonable. And so I think they're engaged for this.
Okay, good. Okay, anything else on the warrant? Okay, all right. And if not, then moving along to North Hadley Village Hall.
It was my intent, when I brought that up at the last meeting, that we be doing this with some other boards so that we do it once, once and once and for all. So the information that we have available in front of us is just for clarity, that's great, but I want, like I said, I want to make sure that the Municipal Buildings Committee, and this is just so that we can all be on the same page.
Right.
Historical Commission, the Planning Board, Municipal Buildings Committee, ourselves, let's all sit down, let's know where we can park, where we can't park, what we can put in there for apartments, what's available, what's not available, and so that we get a, a document put together that hopefully is-
A reasonable bid on, yeah. A reasonable bid on, on the property.
So did you happen to know when they're meeting again? No, because I was wondering, I mean, our, I don't, I hate, hate to add that level on to March 7th because we're going to be pretty full, but-
I think that's a pretty full meeting there that you're looking at. And again, they just want to have an idea.
Can we just give it, do they have this information right now?
No, we'll get this to them and so, to everybody.
Get this information to all the boards involved and-
Well, so we, we should come up with a date and then, to your, to your point, John, make sure everybody has all the information.
Yeah.
So March 20th meeting?
23rd.
20th is when the Municipal Building Committee is scheduled to meet.
So we would be the 21st, which is that Wednesday.
Right. But we've got so much with the getting ready for town meeting and everything, I was just wondering if we should go to their meeting.
I, let me ask them, because that's a fair question.
All right. So just because I have a feeling it's going to maybe be more than just like a half-hour discussion. Okay. You want to ask them, so either the 20th or the 21st at ours, what their preference would be?
Or what their ideas are for timing, then, you know, how they feel it because you're coming up on town meeting pretty, pretty quick there. I know how those times get squeezed.
Yeah.
We're going to have better information shortly as to how the, the meetings are going with the Finance Committee and, you know.
But we also have the, we still have the article out there for the fire station, right?
Oh, for the additional funding, yeah, that's under the capital article.
So I'd love to have this conversation before we get to the town meeting floor.
Yeah.
Right.
Choice, has that Subcommittee met? I met with Mr. DeCavencin, he said he was going to call a meeting.
We have not met yet.
Okay. Maybe it would be a good thing.
Okay.
Because I think my number that I'm using for the town warrant is pretty old at this point, so we may want to look at that again.
I thought Mike just said last week that he had a number he was comfortable with.
He did, and I think, you know, we're, we're trying to probably, we rework things. We're, had some discussion in the ambulance study committee meeting about housing an ambulance at some point in time and going forward from there and what the fire department is going to be looking like. So, you know, the thing is, is that where are we all going to have this? Is it going to be Center Station or do we truly need to do a North Hadley annex? So that, that has been kicking around, which certainly deserves to be brought with the Subcommittee. So I think, you know, having a meeting sooner, I'll, I'll contact Mike and-
Yeah, if we get some direction, that'd be good. What a segue.
Perfect segue into the ambulance study committee update. She's done this before. So the ambulance subgroup met and the conclusion that we have come to is that we would like to recommend to the Select Board that we pursue a negotiation process with Amherst for a two-year contract with a one-year renewal period. We would like- for a two-year contract with a one-year renewal period. We would like to see how that negotiation process goes. And recognizing that, you know, I mean, we, we were very, very impressed with Action EMS, I think surprisingly so. And there, there are some lingering concerns we have with the relationship that we have with Amherst. So, but we can't really take it any further until we see what Amherst is willing to bring to the table.
And that's a recommendation to the study committee?
So moved.
Anything?
Yeah, I'll second that.
Okay. So all in favor of pursuing a net path and then more to come, obviously before anything gets signed?
There's any, any legal hurdles that we're going to be crossing here?
No, not aware of any.
With the contracts?
Not aware of any.
Or with the proposals?
Not aware of any. What you're doing is you're pursuing all options right now. You haven't said no to your vendor yet.
And Action is still on the table. Let's, let's make it clear. They did come back, we can say, and gave us some new numbers. That's why we would still like to see what Amherst would come up with because it's, it's not a done deal with Action EMS. What we do because of our history with the Amherst, like to see what they have to offer.
And the committee, the, the work group would like to stay intact because, you know, presumably tomorrow morning, David's going to pick up the phone. He's going to call his colleague, Mr. Buckman over at Amherst. And they'll, they'll look at their schedules and all of that good stuff. And so we'll move forward in that regard. But then ultimately, when we get to the point, John, where, you know, a contract is about to be inked, the, the work group would really like to see that because one of the issues we ran into in the past is, you know, some changes occurred over time and kind of got away from us a bit. So we want to make sure that it's in concert with everything that we heard firsthand and-
The select board will still be entering into contract?
Oh, of course. Yeah, absolutely.
The select board. Yeah, okay.
Yeah. But just like, you know, again, seems like a good work group.
I looked at some of the things you're doing and they're just not apples to apples, you know. And I, and I understand, but I just don't want to get ourselves in a bind in a bidding process that someone has bid on. Maybe we should just take the bidding rate out of it and stay in negotiations with those two that are interested in it, you know.
What? I think that's where we're at. Right. The fact that, that's, we only have the two, Amherst and Action. Okay. All right.
I was going to make a suggestion to Mike and I haven't even mentioned it to him yet.
Do we do all those in favor?
Oh.
Oh, yeah.
Are we on another topic?
No, we aren't. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good catch.
Sorry. I didn't know versus.
Yeah.
I'm going to add to that.
No, I didn't know if you were going on with the same subject or if we-
No, I am discussing ambulance and response times. If we should know what it is, if a mock drill of response time could be done between calling a response to go to the farthest end of northeast and south to see what our response times would be, pulling the alarm, having people show up and going for that when we have already four people in the station during the day. And what it would be, we'd call people at nighttime just to get a rough idea of what our response times are and compare them to what other people are asking us or telling us that their response times are.
Yeah. I mean, we're still, I mean, under, under any circumstance, we're a couple years away from thinking about bringing it in.
What's your response?
But it would still be-
Still going to know.
You should help, you should help on that.
Yeah.
But we don't have a mock, we don't have a response time to those things.
If we did ourselves versus, what we have for-
Correct. Using center station as the focal point.
You going to ask them?
Yeah. Is that okay?
Okay with me.
All right. Just wanted to be sure. Okay.
All right. Anything else?
Next meeting is?
21st? I mean, March 17th.
Nice try.
Hurry and slip. I was trying to skip over that one. Okay.
Did David have anything else for us?
Yeah. Anything else in your report or anything you want with David's on or?
I said, you know, let you read it. I won't summarize it. There, we've been focusing in on town meeting almost exclusively. So that's, that's it. All town meeting all the time at this point.
And plus all the other stuff?
Plus all the other stuff. We did have damage done to the West Street Common and the, the state's postal service came and met with me. They're going to make it right. So-
Oh, they did?
Yeah. They apologized for the rookie mistake that was perpetrated. And then there was damage done to the dyke. Nothing serious. Some juveniles decided to take a joyride. Can't give you a whole lot of details, but we'll be working with their insurance to make that, put that dyke back together.
There's a public service announcement? The ground is really wet and soft.
And very soft.
We'd hate anybody-
It's still walkable though. The levee is still a walkable commodity. At this time, we haven't shut it down due to the ignorance today?
That's correct. It's still walkable. Bring your relays because it's muddy. It's still going to hold back the water. So we're in good shape.
Yeah. We'd hate somebody else to slide instead of down-
Down, yeah.
Down the West Beach side and go to the riverside. So-
The irony of those two incidents occurring in the same two days is ridiculous.
A spring fever.
It's okay. It'll freeze tonight.
Yeah. We've got extra help for the dyke this year. The icebergs out there are the glaciers.
Yes, the floating glaciers. Okay. Anything else then for tonight's meeting? Any announcements?
Do not.
None?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good night, everybody.
Nice job.